Climate Change Task Force Health at the night. Is that officially over?
Okay. Great, the October 28, 2020 special meeting of Board of Selectmen will come to order. We'd like to welcome everyone joining us via Facebook Live as well as those doing it on the phone. Just as a reminder to those on the phone, please keep your line muted until we will call upon them. So, thank you, and we'll start with the funds.
Leading to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we are now officially in the public hearing portion of the meeting. And before we get started, I just want to check that both Susan Cullen, our Director of Economic and Community Development, as well as Matthew Rabania, Assistant Project Director with WIN Development are both on the line.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, I'm here as well.
Thank you both. Okay, so we are calling the public hearing to order. Susan, would you like to give an overview of the grant?
Certainly. So, this evening, we're seeking funds through the Small Cities Community Development Block Grants, that program in the amount of $1 million to support the infrastructure of the Campbell Grain Redevelopment Project. The federal government, under the auspices of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, allocates an annual amount of funding to the state of Connecticut for the purposes of distribution under these programs. The Connecticut Department of Housing requires the town to conduct a public hearing to satisfy citizen participation requirements. Previously, the town of Stonington has supported the Regional Homelessness Initiative and the Housing Authority with funding from these competitive grant rounds. For this application, WIN Development has proposed an 82-unit mixed-income rental housing project on the site. The project will consist of a single five-story structure with one block of garage parking underneath and four stories of residential units and amenity space. The project will consist of a mix of Studio 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units, and the building will feature a leasing and management office, community lounge, fitness room, and common laundry. The project will create a true mixed-income and inclusive community, creating diverse housing options in Pocahontas. Units at the Campbell Grain Site will be affordable to a mix of incomes at 30%, 50%, 80% area median income. The project will also contain several unrestricted market rate units, and approximately 70% of the units will be income-restricted and will be able to be counted towards the town of Stonington's affordability. Both the Stonington Plan of Conservation and Development and the state's Plan of Conservation and Development discuss the need for housing choice and economic diversity in our housing stock. The principles of utilizing already-developed areas are consistent practices for efficiencies within the town's infrastructure. Stonington consistently supports a diverse populace in age, sex, race, and origin, as well as embracing a policy of meeting the needs of low- and moderate-income households within our boundaries. The program also meets state and federal objectives of the CDBG program by benefiting low- and moderate-income households, providing safe, decent, and affordable, energy-efficient housing, revitalizing deteriorated residential districts while discouraging displacement, leveraging all incoming program income to appropriately further program priorities, enforcing housing and health codes, and promoting coordinated strategies to meet the needs of our community.
Great, thank you so much to Mr. Rabania. Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
Yes, thank you to the board for letting us participate in this public hearing. I think Susan did a good job of giving an overview of the project itself. I just wanted to give a little bit more context about WIN Companies and who we are, and talk a little bit more about the project financing and why it's important that we submit this application jointly with the town for the CDBG funds to the Department of Housing. So, WIN Companies was approached by the Stonington Economic Development Commission about a year ago at this point about the Campbell Grain Site. WIN is a 50-year-old company. We are family-owned, primarily develop affordable and mixed-income and workforce housing in the Northeast, in the Mid-Atlantic. We've been active in Connecticut for over 40 years. We own and manage about 3,000 homes in the state, all across the state, with properties in Waterbury, Bridgeport, Hartford, East Haven, Thompson, Putnam. So, we're all over the state, and we're very familiar with Connecticut, including a regional office in Hartford that manages all of our properties in the state. And WIN Companies beyond Connecticut is the largest manager of affordable workforce and privatized military housing in the country. And we're a long-term owner of housing. So, the projects that we develop, including this one, you know, we go on to hold on to them, manage them, maintain them for really long periods of time. We have projects that we built 40 and 50 years ago. And when we come into new communities, we really want to become part of the community. We're not merchant builders, and that means that, you know, we don't come in, just build something and sell it to whoever wants to buy it. We build properties, we build communities, and we want to make sure that we're working with the people who already live and work and own businesses in the community to make sure we're creating an asset that people are really proud of. You know, the Campbell Grain Site in particular is particularly visible. Anyone who takes the Amtrak across the river, this is going to be the first thing they see as they cross into the state. So, we want to make sure that we're building something that's going to look beautiful for a really long time. So, in addition to building the property, you know, we're going to have onsite property management and maintenance staff to make sure that it looks great for years to come. So, Susan gave a little bit of detail about the building. I'll talk a little bit about the financing structure. So, to get this project financed, we are seeking competitive resources allocated by the state in two agencies in particular, the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, or CHFA, and the Department of Housing, or DOH. These two agencies allocate financing to projects competitively in an annual funding round. The funding round this year is coming up in a few weeks. And the capital stack, or the funds that we're going to use to build this project, is very multi-layered. So, it comes from a mix of low-income housing tax credits, some bond funds from the Department of Housing, the CDBG funds, which is the subject of this public hearing, some energy rebates through Eversource, and private debt and private equity that we'll be bringing into this project. And the CDBG funds through the Small Cities Program represents a very important piece of the capital stack for a few reasons. One is the size. So, a $1 million award is a very significant amount of money that the state is able to allocate to this project and fills the gap that we have that allows us to proceed with the project. And secondly, it shows that the town is working collaboratively with us as a partner to have this project undertaken. And CHAF and DOH, when they're making awards of projects, likes to see that there is participation from the local community in which these projects are being done. And the CDBG award allows the town to do it without actually having to use its own resources, which, for a lot of communities in the state, it is very difficult to find cash to put into these projects. So, the Small Cities Program allows towns like Stonington to apply to the state to leverage their ability to get resources for the state and then contribute to make these projects happen. So, we're really thankful for Susan's expertise in helping us navigate the CDBG process. I like to say, you know, WIN has been working really hard to try to make this as public a process as we can despite the circumstances with COVID. You know, even with everything that's going on, we managed to have some outdoor meetings, including the meeting in the fire station at the end of July to discuss the project before we started the formal zoning process. At this point, as you may know, we've completed the formal zoning process, and now we're in the process of submitting our funding applications. And we're really grateful for any support that the board is able to offer this project at the meeting tonight.
Susan, if I could just add two seconds of quick comment. My name's Adam Stein with WIN Development. I work with Matt and obviously Bill and everyone on the phone and meeting here. But Matt described a large company at WIN, which we are. But I think it's important for the board to know that this is the only project we're working on in Connecticut right now. This is our priority project. We finished a project in East Haven. We just got awarded a project in Waterbury, Connecticut that Matt is working on. But we have no other competitive applications going in to CHFA. This is the priority here for WIN, and I think that's important for the board to know and understand that we don't want to spread ourselves thin and we pick one deal at a time that we feel that we have support and backing on, and this is the initiative. So, I just wanted to pass that on and also say thanks to everyone. Susan and others have been incredibly helpful throughout the process. So, I just want to introduce myself and just say that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Adam, and thank you, Matt, as well. That was really helpful. Just moving to the next item. So, Susan, did you receive any written testimony in advance of this meeting for or against the 2021 Community Development Block Grant?
Susan, I think you're muted.
Sorry, it wasn't letting me unmute. I think my button was stuck. No, I didn't receive any written comments or testimony in advance of the hearing.
Okay, thank you. So, at this point, we're going to ask any residents that wish to speak either for or against the proposal to please hit star 3 on your phone so we can unmute your line. You can listen as the prompt will tell you once your line has been unmuted. And if you do want to speak, please provide your full name and address. Okay, so, hearing, no requests for comments. We're going to officially close the public hearing portion. Thank you so much to Matt and Adam and Sue for all giving us that great overview. We'll now move on to the discussion of the individual items for the CDBG application. So, we have a number of documents that we need to approve for this grant, including citizen participation plans, fair housing resolutions, and a resolution authorizing the submission of a Small Cities Community Development Block Grant application for the Campbell Grain Redevelopment. Sorry, I was a mouthful with the mask on. Could I get a motion to approve the 2021 Community Development Block Grant, including all the documents we just named?
No move.
Can I get a second?
Right second.
Okay, motion second. Now, if you guys would like to have any discussion.
Nothing with respect to the documents. I'm in favor of the project. Maybe I'll add this now. I know that all of the meetings that have been virtual are recorded and are on the town's Facebook site. And planning and zoning went through an extensive meeting in approval of this project. So, if anybody that's watching under now or sometime in the future, you can look at the entire presentation and discussion on the planning and zoning meeting. And then with respect to emergency access and safety, the police commission also had a similar extensive conversation regarding this project. And both, you know, were passed unanimously. So, there's fair amount of support throughout the other boards and commissions for this project. So, I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, June.
No, thank you. I also support the project.
Thank you. And maybe just to add to what June said for anyone who's listening now or later. In addition to our town YouTube page or our social media, also on the Stonington 1649 site, you can find both a listing of all the articles that have been written about this project as well as a recording of the kind of a virtual community conversation. The WIN team was kind enough to come down from Massachusetts. The Pocahontas Firehouse team was very gracious and hosting us there. So, we had a physical space to do the meeting, and they did a great presentation. It's all recorded. You can see it on there. And there's a whole time for Q and A where a lot of questions were also answered, so people could also go there. Okay, so, no more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? None? So, the motion carries. So, Matt, Adam, and Sue, thank you so much. You're of course welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. But there's also, you also obviously don't have to. But we will talk more about WIN later in the meeting, so you are very welcome to stay. Thank you. So, the next item is approval of the minutes. Do I get a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of October 14, 2020?
Right second.
Thank you. All those in... Sorry, there's a motion. Any discussion?
No.
No, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under correspondence, we received an application from John Golden for the opening on the Economic Development Commission. And then we thanked John. We'll be publicly speaking to him in the near future. And then we also received a letter from Dave Hammond, who's the Chair of the Economic Development Commission, in support of the WIN Development project at Campbell Grain Site, as well as for their request for the fixed assessment. We just entered that into correspondence. And then on reappointment for the Commission on Aging, could I get a motion to reappoint Stacy Casada to the Commission on Aging?
No move. Right second.
Any discussion? No? Yeah, thank you, Stacy, for staying on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. So, I'll try and move things on quickly. But under COVID, I did just want to remind people who are listening that since our numbers have started going up every week on Fridays, usually late afternoon, we do a post on the town website under news. It summarizes both data we've gotten from the league, from the state, from the Department of Public Health, and then also from Ledgley Health District. So, we wait for both of those updates to come in, and then we update it every week. And then we also try and share a lot of the on social media. In addition, we are doing various other posts, both in written format and video, ranging from looking at issues related to mental health to Halloween. And with Halloween approaching this weekend, just a reminder to people, if they can, please do check the website, share it, share it around verbally, share it through social media. We took a lot of information from the state guidelines as well as from Ledgley. And we also tried to do a slightly more lighthearted video to summarize some of that. But it's all written, as well as in video format, the burrowardens.townhand, as well as our Director of Human Services, Nan Theodore, has joined us to both talk about safety for Halloween, COVID precautions that should be taken, as well as a number of much safer, lower-risk activities that are happening around town throughout the week and on Halloween. Just two, for example, the Seaport is having a costume parade for kids. Anyone in the community is welcome to come for free after 4:00. Kids are welcome to Seaport all day for free costumes. And then the Yellow Farmhouse is hosting something in the afternoon. So, there's a number of different activities happening around town that are lower-risk than traditional trick-or-treating. And with that said, let's move on to new business. We have now our letter, a potential letter of support for WIN Development Company application. So, this letter is to support their application to the Department of Housing and the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority for consideration of their application to the state. Could I get a motion to approve sending a letter of support for the application that WIN Development Company will be sending to the Department of Housing and Connecticut Housing Finance Authority? Can I have a second?
Right second.
Right, motion, I got it. Any discussion? No? Thank you, guys. So, all those in favor? Sorry.
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, so, we'll be sending that letter hopefully tomorrow to the application. And also, under new business, is a resolution that we'd like to add that addresses the request that we've received from WIN Development for a tax abatement on their proposed development on Targville Street, and our support to move the items to legal voters in the town to consider at a future special town meeting. And essentially, to summarize, we are working on a plan to come up with how to most likely to host a virtual town meeting, which out of last week's executive order, NICE came out, which gives us, on the local level, the authority to host a virtual town meeting. So, we're working internally to figure out how that could happen. Or potentially, let's see, it could work, an outdoor meeting where it's safer. Some people can socially distance. But we just have to take into consideration, I think, what will be the most accessible for all people, either who are higher-risk for COVID, or to be sure it's ABA compliant, and other factors. So, hopefully in the next week or two, we'll figure that out, the logistics component out. And then we'll come back to a Board of Selectmen meeting to ask that we officially put it out and set a date for a future town meeting where residents will be able to vote on the proposed tax abatement. We'll also be working with our new tax assessor and the WIN team to come up with a official tax abatement proposal that will also come out hopefully in the next few weeks. So, this is sort of the first step. But since this application has to go to state, we did want to put forward a resolution just saying that we are planning to have a town meeting. But given COVID, we need a little bit of time to figure out the best way to do it for everyone's safety. So, could I have a motion to approve the resolution? So, here a second.
Right second.
The motion and a second. Do you guys want to have discussion on this one?
Yes. So, the tax abatement, so that people understand, is instead of the town coming up with matching funds, because for all these grants, in order for a project to get them, they want the town to come up with matching funds. So, our matching funds can actually be applied to the project in the form of a tax abatement. So, basically, we get to pay for it over a specific amount of time. So, it'll help the project go forward. It'll qualify the project for the grant. So, it's not as if it's just a tax abatement without cause. It's a tax abatement because we don't have the pile of money right now for the matching funds. So, it's kind of like a payment plan of our matching funds. So, that's why I'm in support of it. And I think if we do have a public, a town meeting about it, a further discussion on all of that, the impact, positive impact of the provided tax abatement and the project will be really helpful to people who may not know, you know, haven't been following, or may not know all of the details of this project. So, I just wanted to add that.
That was a very good, that was a great summary. Thank you.
That's great. And I'm basically going to echo what you said, especially the part that I think it will be important part of the public hearing to really describe this and explain it so the public does understand this process.
No, thank you, right. All right. Okay, so, thank you. And then, so, for the resolution, we have the motion and the second. We have some discussion. So, all those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Great. So, that will be put forward, I believe, in our application that they'll be sending forward with everything else we did today. The next item on the agenda is comments from the public. So, if you'd like to comment, you can press star 3, and we can unmute your line. And again, just listen for the prompt, and it'll tell you. And then you're going to give your name and address. And if anyone has any comments on what we've talked about already, or other issues. If you think we have any, just a reminder, you can reach out anytime over email or phone call or make an appointment to come by, and we're happy to talk. And I'm happy to engage top lines. Okay, so, comments from the selectmen. So, Tess, do you want to hear it?
Sure. I don't actually have that much because most of the meetings that I follow did not meet. Or I admit, they'll be meeting in the next couple of weeks. But I do want to thank Dave Hammond for spending, you know, a lot of time talking to me about the progress, the resolution and the tax abatement and the development. And Susan Cullen as well for talking to me about that and for working on the Boathouse grant application, which is ongoing.
Thank you, Tess.
No, the only thing is, I don't know if I reported on this last time or not, but the Climate Change Task Force is becoming more active. We were meeting every other month, and now I think we're going to be meeting every month just to, and more active meaning, educating the town about our vulnerability to climate change and making sure the Board of Finance and a lot of other different boards are on track about, you know, this is just happening. But just to have a very factual distribution of information and compiling all the things so the public knows all the things that we've already done to help become a greener town that we might not have really publicized, but we've done a lot. And I think even the Climate Change Task Force doesn't know all of the items. You know, just replacing, just, I mean, replacing lights, what that's done as far as energy saving. So, that's it.
That's great.
And next week starts a whole new month. So, I'll be having meetings ready, so.
No, let's say that. The perfect key off to two updates I wanted to give first. So, one is for, and I love you calling Susan still on the line, but Sue worked extremely hard from day one when she got here, along with our intern Ian and our new intern Kaylee, but to work really hard on the Sustainable CT program. And we had registered as part of the program previously, but we hadn't really gotten to be a certified city yet. And so, we actually just got the word yesterday that we are now officially a bronze-certified sustainable city in Connecticut. So, a huge thank you to Sue and everyone who helped contribute on the town staff to that project. Like you said, June, I think it was really helpful for staff to see how much, you know, bits and pieces came from all different departments and different places, and different boards and commissions and volunteers. It was kind of pulling from all these different places to get us to all the information. Because Sustainable CT, for those not familiar with it, you should definitely look at it. It's an amazing program. But they do a great job. It's not, you know, it's environment, culture, and the art. It's inclusive housing. It runs so many different areas that it looks at. So, it's a great way for us almost to like report and track and measure what we've been doing at the town, and then where do we have gaps, and where do we need to do more moving forward. So, we'll be looking at that. But it's basically, it was really exciting, so we'll try and put the word out on that. We haven't put that out publicly yet, so that's, you guys are the first to know. Everyone's listening, okay? So, that was really exciting. So, big thank you. On the other one, we're really excited about also working in partnership with Sue, more of her volunteer as a local resident, kind of half, but also a bit because it is related to Sustainable CT and her role here. But you may have noticed, or people may have noticed, we have a new garden coming along at Town Hall. And you can read more about it on the website. It won't take up a bunch of time here with it. But essentially, thanks to potential Eagle Scout candidate who works with Sue and organized a ton of volunteers, continually organizing volunteer work parties. We're building the garden. We have, you know, the manual labor, have the hard part, all in-kind, donations also from public works, the transportation, we're all spoiled down. It's been a real team effort. But we asked the community about a month ago to help us meet a goal of raising a little over $5,000. And I'm really happy to report that we've met our goal. The town did have to contribute $1,000 at the end to meet the goal, but all that is leveraged for a dollar-for-dollar match. So, we put $10,500 in funding, only spending $1,000. So, that's really great. And it's probably an intense amount of work that Sue's team and the volunteers, the Eagle Scout candidate and his friends and family have done. It's just been amazing. So, come by, see the location, see the site. Hopefully, we'll get it to a point where we are close enough to start signing people up for class. And as a reminder, this is an expansion of the existing program, already active services. That's really been very successful, has a waitlist, so hopefully we'll be able to offer it to more people. And I keep looking at the clocks, and I can't believe we actually timed this as well as we did. We tried really hard. So, today, at 6 o'clock, Safe Futures is having a vigil. So, people can turn this off and turn on Safe Futures. They'll be live streaming on their Facebook page. But they're asking people in the community, you meant you can't watch us right now. Do you go put a candle in your window? We've lit up all the windows at Town Hall with candles. Or shine a purple light, if you have it, to honor all those unremembered lost from domestic violence homicide in our community. So, since it is 6 o'clock, I am particularly blessed to take a moment of silence to remember those that we've lost in our own community. Thank you. And just a reminder, one other way you can help is by donating. Thank you. And just a reminder, one other way you can help is by donating to Safe Futures. A recent statistic they put out is that this summer, their operating expenses have gone up 830%. So anyone who works with a budget can appreciate that. It is really hard, and they're working really hard to continue to meet the needs of Safe Futures. But anything that anyone in the community can do, every dollar counts, to donate towards Safe Futures. You can go right to their site. And if you can't donate, you can do these other things that we talked about even tonight, and just even take a moment to silent. So with that, I need to close. Hopefully, people will tune into the vigil. But anything further?
No.
No. All right. We will stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.